May I ask please? Love you, happy new members of the community this hour, I speak for your place in hand. I see your lovely people. We pray for guidance and progress of hand and ask them to appear to show us how to come back our way. It is filled with joy and appreciation. He must be desired to find ways for a telling number and help us to work together and encourage each other for excellence. We ask that we challenge each other to reach higher and harder to be the best we can be. My sincere meaning of the Lord is Christ.
Honorable President, if you could pardon me. Honorable Attorney General, I say yes. Honorable Secretary, by his behalf. Honorable Attorney General, do you? Honorable Justice John Vincent, I would like to know. Honorable Assistant Deputy Simeon. Honorable Attorney General, do you? 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 Mr. Presiding Officer, 11 members of the City Council are present. I say five more. For the big special secretary of office, right 11 item. This is a treasure of the proposed Honorable Attorney for the year 2014.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer, I move that we approve allow the business of the days presented by the Secretary. I'm the Vice Mayor. Section 319 of the Local Government Code of 1991 provides for legislative authorization of the budget. This is also in relation to section 458, which provides for the powers to listen functions of the San Jose County Social. Speaking of others, the San Jose County Social Responsibility. Who approve the annual and supplemented budgets of the city government and appropriate funds for specific programs, projects, services and activities of the city or for other offices not under legal law in order to promote the general welfare of the city and its inhabitants. The proposed way for the budget of San Chavo City was received by the Office of the Secretary of the San Jose County in October 16, 2014. The documents include the document, the budget message of our local chief executive Honorable Joseph Sanz de la Tama, the local expenditure program, the budget of expenditure and sources of financing, the local development investment plan as adopted by the City Development Council and roads to the San Jose County through its resolution 2014 in last year and the new City Development Council through a CDC resolution 2014 in last year. Also included in personnel schedule. All these documents form part of the required budget that was considered during the deliberation of the council. The City Council, for its part, agreed on the budget in a headbang hearing which started on November 20, 2013 and from there on had been continuing end-mong hearings to deliberate on the proposed annual budget. None of these end-mong hearings were deliberation on the budget of the various offices and the other three hearings was the discussion on the local development plan, the annual investment plan and the projects under the proposed law which was incorporated in the submitted budget. The City Council observed transparency in the process of review evaluation of the proposed budget. Each member were encouraged to ask whether this clarification observation given suggestions of the budget. Each member was provided with a copy of the budget so that each member of the City Council made review in uncertainty the compliance to the statute law and administerative requirements as provided for under section 316 of RA 7160 for our local government code. The presence of the local finance cluster and the department heads concerned during the hearings facilitated our deliberation. The San Jose County evaluated and deliberated on the document. The budget was at the estimated income of 881,157,429 representing San Chavo's GDP last year for 2014. 107,750,000 representing the general income and 35,000,000 representing the economic enterprise collection. As mentioned earlier, there was inclusion of an estimated external source amount into 1 billion totaling to the submitted proposed budget of 2,242,274,299. The added expenditures as presented to the City Council presented with budgetary requirements and general limitations being observed as provided for under RA 7160. The allocation for general services is 469,134,324,700 pesos. For health services, an amount of 98,225,007 pesos were also allocated. For social services, the 44,582,194,360 pesos. And for economic services, we have 181,804,634 pesos. For other purposes, what we say the nine offices expenditures included the 5% economic fund of 51,210,371 pesos and 45,000 pesos. Under the 20% economic development fund is 1,180,000 pesos. And the age superact of 37,057 pesos what was adopted in the previous quarter. It is total to 2,242,27... 2,242,274,429 pesos. It was also presented to us the expenditure by major expense class. In particular, under the general fund, the total of 379,1595,550 pesos. Under member OB, we have 359,834,462 pesos. And for captain of day, we have 54,634,000 pesos, total of 790,960,57,350 pesos. The major discussion dwelled on the inclusion of a proposed loan right within the proposed budget 2014. The question on the dignity of including the proposed loan as part of the rescaring of the city's proposed budget was raised. Where these were announced to the BBM and this in effect... Affected the deliberation. Dahil bagong po ito sa karanasan ng Consejo ng San Chavo, sa unang patagakaw na may inclusion sa proposed budget kahina ta'wa ng proposed loan, ay masusin pinagalanan ko ito ng Consejo ng San Chavo at yiniinig namin ng kompanhin kung may naiiit o kung meron pang nagtatanong sa inclusion nito. Kapulang kunin 'yung lahat ang miyembro ko ng Consejo, ang mga nagmamalasakit sa kabay ng bayan ng Lusod ng San Chavo. Kaya sa kakisahay ng Consejo ng San Chavo, minarap ako ng pakuang miyembro o lahat ng konsehan ng Lusod ng San Chavo ay minamuting ihiwalay ang pangpapasa ng regular budget na hindi nakapaloob ang patokala external source o ang pagmumulat ng isang billion. However, with due respect to the City Development Council who proposed major projects to be funded out of the proposed loan, this is included in the local development investment plan and the annual investment plan. Dahil kunin po, ay bahagi ng requirement sa kahit na magkaroon po ng pakaisa na magkaroon o may payo ang mga priority projects na inumukha ng City Development Council, na binubuo ng mga idihalan, 37 barangay chairman at mga miyembro ng accredited city, city and society organizations ay nakapaloob po sa annual investment plan ang mga paruhala proyekto gugugulan sana ng pinakamukha lang pangungunang. Ang ibig ko sabihin, mas minarap ko na magminungok pa eh, maipasala ng Consejo na hiwalay ang regular budget at sa unang pagganak sa mga regular nagawa ng Consejo sa mga darating dito ay umas ang Consejo dito sa panukala kung papaano mapupuntuhan ang mga proyekto pinanukala ng City Development Council. Your Honor, I have here and it was already provided to the members of this office party two copies of the report of committee Nbang. Ang una po, ang nilalaman niyang sakin matter ay ng proposed resolution approving the 2014 local development and investment plan and sureties of priority projects to be funded under the 20% economic development fund amounting to 1,180,000 pesos of the proposed 2014 annual budget of the city government of Santiago. Ang recommendation po, na inayunan ng lahat ng miyembro ng Consejo ay nito ay maababahan. Mr. Presiding Officer, I move for the record for adoption of the Committee Nbang Report Number 8 CC 10112014.
Okay. There is a motion to adopt Committee Report Number 8 CC 10112014. Do you have a second? Any objection?
Mr. Presiding Officer, each member of this City Council was provided with the topic of the draft resolution. Each one of us has provided, was already provided, included the proposed budget and list of the LBIT projects and that of the annual investment program or the projects under it. Ito po ay natalakay na natin sa ating mga ginanap na headbang hearings. Now at this point, your honor, I move that we approve under suspended rules. Question on our title suspended rules in order to tackle this measure as we are already late, ahead of date in the passage of the budget, your honor. So I move that we suspend the rules to tackle this measure, your honor.
There is a motion to suspend the rules, do you understand that?
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. At this point, I move for the approval of the 2014 local development and investment plan or LBIT and the sureties of priority projects to be funded under 20% economic development fund amounting to 1,130,000 pesos of the proposed 2014 annual budget of the city government of Santiago.
There is a motion to adopt the proposed resolution approving the 2014 normal development and investment plan in terms of priority projects to be funded under 20% economic development fund amounting to 1,130,000 pesos of the proposed 2014 annual budget of the city of Santiago. Do you have a second? Any objection? Do you have a motion to speak by? For the record, each member of the City Council has provided three copies of the proposed budget. And in that proposed budget, there is a list that is to one page for you. Do you understand the order?
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. Na pasadin po tayo, pinaginapon natin ang kopya o City ng Committee Report Number 8 CC 102014 ng Committee Nbang. Ang sakin matter to bito ay the proposed ordinance appropriating the amount of 1,242,429 pesos representing the annual budget of the city government of Santiago for calendar year 2014. Lahat po ang miyembro ng Consejo ay nagkaisa sa panukala dito at ang recommendation po ay pangtiwaling ordinance sa'kin po. Ang mga miyembro po ay napigandin na copy o City ng ordinance sa'. Salamat po, Mr. Presiding, for calling the attention of the service and teacher. Bago po natin may atap, may papakayos lang po sa section, do sa pinan ng mga naiproy sa atin. Nagropo ang section four, so hindi natin kay Mr. Secretary to correct yung pinan instead of section four po. Ayun, section five, at section five na ka-plate dito magwi section six. Sa pag-plate dito, bago ang session, sa mga miyembro ng Consejo, may nais po'y paruhala pagdudetab dito sa mga paruhala sa ating proposed ordinance, ang ating Conseja ng Lusod ng San Jose.
Thank you, Monsor. Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. I'd like to please on record to repeat and the budget hearing. This representation move that a portion or the amount of 200,000 pesos in the appropriation for other maintenance and operating expenses referring to account code 969. Under the City Health Office, it will be exclusively used for repayment of retirement incentive for qualified barangay health ward for retiring pursuant to ordinance number 7 CC 15. Mr. Presiding Officer, the motion was actually seconded and then eventually favorably resolved and like this matter be part of the record of today's session, Mr. Presiding Officer. I repeat, Mr. Presiding Officer, in accordance with the Local Government Code and Republic of 9184, I move that another provision be added to the subject of appropriation ordinance. I move that this will be section five and the provision shall be as follows. In the implementation of the local development projects, no contract may be entered into by the local chief executive in behalf of the city government of Santiago without prior authorization by the San Jose County Party Social pursuant to section 22 paragraph C of the Local Government Code and section 37 of Republic 9184, otherwise known as the Government Reform Reform Reform. I so move, Mr. Presiding Officer.
There is a motion to adopt the Committee Report of the President of San Jose, who is a candidate. We make the decision that the proposed resolution for the one of the national project of the city of Santiago. Any objection?
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. It was already approved by the Council, yung po inclusion, we yield to her suggestion to include section five. Now, sa mga nandito po, maari natin tatanong kayo pakita ng mga bilis ng pakilos ng Consejo. Sa pagkatinawan po ang mapagtatanong, loob palang po nasa headbang hearings po ang ating City Council. Kaya ngayon po, ngayong hapon, ay nilalaman po ang pagpipinar ng pagpapasa ng kaysa hanggang Consejo. Kapulang po, ngang nabati po kami natin, your honor, I am indicating that we are tackling under suspended rules, your honor. We are called we are not mistaken generally and the ilanasahan po ito na ito 'yung unang unang ipasala ng ating Consejo. Sa pagkataon ito, Mr. Presiding Officer, wala po kong katanungan, only nais pang magsalita tulad sa mga miyembro ng Consejo. I now, for your honor, for the approval of the adoption of the ordinance appropriating the amount of 1,242,429 pesos representing the annual budget of the city government of San Chavo for calendar year 2014. I so move, Mr. Presiding Officer.
All right. There is a motion from group of persons appropriating the amount of 1,242,429 pesos representing the annual budget of the city of Santiago for calendar year 2014, do you understand? Any objection?
Mr. Presiding Officer, I mean na po, na maging sponsor po ang lahat ng miyembro ng Consejo and this be presented in law for Mr. Presiding Officer. Sa pagbukas po, Mr. Presiding Officer, nagisip lang din po kunin 'yung matatangal ito. Na magpasalamat sa lahat ng miyembro ng Consejo, sa bungsi pag nilang magtalo, sa lahat ng nila nagnagiging. Ako po ay nag-iisa na hindi ko pagagawa ito kung hindi mo kasama ang lahat ng miyembro. So ang masasalamat po ay inaagot po sa lahat ng nilawan naging pagtatrabaho para maipasa ang budget dito. Maraming salamat po sa ating City Vice Mayor na siya nagpasitungo na kahit Committee Nbang Heroes. Maraming, maraming salamat po.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you. Sir Chair, I would like to give a manifestation device to... Asia Han. Yet, the honorable Presiding Officer, my dear future partner, Nibolix, the City Council, your honors, guests and board members to the service of the people of San Chavo City, a pleasant afternoon. As a member of this honorable body, I am compelled by my duty to enact or denounce, approve resolutions and appropriate funds for the general welfare of the city and its inhabitants. In accordance with section 458 of the Local Local Red Code, I am bound by my oath to uphold the rights of all San Jacobians. After keen study of the size of the Asia Han, Mr. Chair, I came up with a decision. A decision which I believe is right and just. I want to be clear right on the start of order, I support the honorable local chief executives' programs for the sustainable development of San Chavo City. However, I also have to be very clear that we are co-advocates of the local chief executives' trust to pursue a transparent and accountable leadership and governance. Sir Chair, this humble representation, your honors, accepts us through the concept of sustainable development. The realization of this requires improving the quality of legislation and policymaking. In an article titled "Our Common Future" by United Nations Brother and Commission, the notion for sustainable development was defined as meeting the needs and aspirations of the present generation without compromising the ability of future generations to meet their own needs and aspirations. Sustainable development, Sir Chair, for a beloved city means a better quality of life for every San Jacobi now and for generations to come. Perspective tends to emphasize the fact that many policies at present do not place enough attention to number issues. We need to undertake further and profound studies on the practical meaning of the projects included in the proposed budget of the city government of San Chavo City. Specifically, the projects traditionally funded by the proposed 1,200 pesos loan. I and my partners, Sir Chair, have no doubts as to the legality of the inclusion of the central in the proposed budget. However, this humble representation involves the principle of status of liberty as the prevalence for the welfare of the people is the highest law. We cannot take the risk of hurting such a solution, Mr. Chair. We should not spend the other means. I believe the only thing we should focus on compensating as of the moment is the money our consequences debt to us. With all these considerations, Mr. Chair, let's get this matter overdone, over and done well. May this end all in leaks and character assassinations to the San Jose County Party Social members. My dear Nibolix, fellow San Jacobians, I am in favor of the motion of the majority floor leader to exclude the 1,200 pesos loan from and solely approve the 1,200,000 general and economic enterprise fund in the proposed annual budget of the city of San Chavo. Sir Chair, I would like to manifest to this honorable council that my decision stand up. Stand up for the collective views and opinions of our consequences. Once again, maraming, maraming salamat po, marami na palagkanaw.
Thank you, Honorable Presiding Officer. Please, everyone, to all, yes, my fellow councillors here. Gusto lang po sanang taliwanan ng akin na pagsanayaw po sa tukong Committee Report na pinipili po ng ating board of members. Bago po lahat, gusto'y po kasi lang at ang dibulibo kong mga paruwayan po po na nakisa, nakilahon sa ating pagpasihan, ang magkaroon po tayo ng tunay at transparency, ito po San Chavo City. At napapasalamat po po sa kanila lahat, sa kanila mga kuruguro, sa kanila mga... At napapasalamat po po sa kanila lahat, sa kanila mga kuruguro, sa kanila mga opinion, mga suggestion na ipinatamay lang po sa akin sa ating own social media network. Maakasa po na ipapakupili din po namin ang lahat po ang aduhasiya tungkol po sa transparency and good governance. At paladin po maliwanagan ang gusto at para mung sigurado ang aking hindi po lahat ng ating mga parabayan, at or hindi naman po alam ang asa sa salamin o sa buhay ang pinili ko, may hindi ko po magsalita sa ating salamin uli ka. Na ang pagboto po po, yung na sinabi namin, Mr. President, ay paladin po sa ating regular budget. Ang regular budget po na yan ay puno sa mga pagpapasweldo sa akin may ito po lang sa libo provokador na mangangailangan ng kumita at nagkaprabaho na minsan ipinagbukutan pa. Pangalawa ang pinagbubuwang po ang mga regular projects ng ating City Government na tayo namang po pinapasa sa mga nakaraan mga panabol po. Sana po nating subito sa ating mga parabayan na what tayo po ni po ito po lang. Maraming po dapat pantayan, mga ito dapat natin siguradunin na ang mga proyekto na ito ay talagang nadaganamo sa bawat sisiisimong mga parangay. Kaya magtiisabu tayo ngayon, maraming maraming salamat ang ating work of the council.
For the record, the San William Panuson begat na ises, the light of the dawn, who have an access or manners of the officer, so any amount of the budget, particularly those that be approved in the proposed budget, will be being approved on market price, daily price of the party. And, uh, for the heads of the two proposed resolutions, still not to be made at the moment, but it must be should of course, completely compensated. The name of the boss at the hall, uh, of the San Chavo City, San Chavo City, a million dollar money, my dekorates, siya po pinisado. Uh, mama, po, uh, po, ha, sa San William Panuson, uh, very proud of that.